January 19, 2016 meeting is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith.
Most power heads, dear Father, we come to you today and we just ask you for wisdom and guidance as we continue to lead this county. We ask you to not judge us and we ask you to just give us faith that we're going to do what is in the best interest of this county. And, Father, we just ask you to just pray for all the folks who wanted to be here tonight to speak on issues that are important to them but couldn't, and just hope that we're going to do what's right and in the best interest of the citizens who live here in Anaronda County. Thank you, Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to briefly speak on anything not on the printed agenda? Ma'am, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record and your remarks to two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Van Busker from Edgewater. Big news in the world of start times this past week with the release from Dr. Allot of his proposed bell schedule. It came as a shock to many residents. They may support healthy and safe school hours in the abstract, but when confronted with the proposed bell schedule inconveniences and changes, they reacted negatively on social media and probably started to email you as well. This resistance to change is vocal right now, and among their arguments is that money is wasted and the county can't afford this plan. But I believe that the county can't afford not to implement this plan or a variation using their software that addresses their community concerns. I also wanted to remind you of the Hamilton Project published by the Brookings Institute that says that there is a nine-to-one benefit-to-cost ratio of later start times for our students. And changing school hours is not just about the students themselves, it's also a reflection of how the county attempts to address its various societal problems in a multifaceted way. Problems that begin in youth and can continue into adulthood, like substance abuse, crime, physical and mental health, suicides, and drowsy driving, are all impacted by poor sleep. And as we look forward to our first winter storm this weekend, we're reminded that AACPS makes their go-no-go decision at four o'clock in the morning because the first student is picked up at 5:23 in the morning. So if we accept their proposed changes and buses are not rolling until seven o'clock, then they have a bit more time to make decisions which impact the driving conditions for all of us. So I know that broad community support will never match the council's unanimous support for healthy school hours that you demonstrated last year, so I can only thank you and say that I look forward to that continued support with this budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker?
Ms. Van Busker, has your organization taken an official position on the budget? I mean, on that specific aspect of the budget? I guess because I'm asking because, obviously, there's a lot of different potential solutions. What's been proposed is just one of them.
Right.
And so I'm just curious if you're fully supportive of what he's doing, or do you think there's a better way to go about doing it that doesn't irritate so many other front folks?
I think it's a good starting point. Obviously, we have questions about how exactly he comes up with the eight million, where does he come up with his 124 extra buses, and those details need to be provided to justify that cost. And, as you know, he hasn't yet provided that to you or to me. So I think, in general, the hours that he's proposed meet the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and lead us down that road, and we just have to address some of the community concerns, use the transportation software so we can make the window a little bit better so that middle schools don't release so late. And then, if they can justify their costs, then I'll support their costs.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Would like to withdraw Bill 316?
Bill 316 is withdrawn. May I have a motion that a partial reading of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes a reading of the whole?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 4.
The meeting was called order by Chairman Derek Fink at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Walker, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of January 4 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution 116, Resolution approving the appointment of a Severn River Commission member. Resolution 216, Resolution appointing a member to the Anaronda County Ethics Commission.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution Number 116 and 216 and Bill Numbers 11115, 11815, 11915, 12015, 12115, and 12215 out of order?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote out of order, Resolutions Number 116 and 216, and Bills Number 11115, 11815, 11915, excuse me, 11115, 11815, 11915, 12015, 12115, and 12215 has passed.
Thank you. Please read the title of Resolution 116.
Resolution approving the appointment of a Severn River Commission member.
Mr. Marsick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 116 is before you to appoint Richard Spencer to the Severn River Commission. As you know, the Severn River Commission provides counsel and advice to the county, the City of Annapolis, and the State of Maryland regarding issues related to the Severn River and its watershed. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions of the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
I'll just speak up on behalf of Mr. Spencer. I've worked with him on a number of issues. He seems incredibly knowledgeable and dedicated to the commission, so I'd urge approval.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution 116? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution 116.
Resolution approving the appointment of a Severn River Commission member.
Any other conversation? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Abstain.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention, Resolution 116 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of 216.
Resolution appointing a member to the Anaronda County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Marsick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is a resolution to appoint Vanessa Carter, who is the council's nominee, to the Ethics Commission.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Fink.
Mr. Pruski?
I just want to commend the county executive for doing the right thing, and if you'd share that with them, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any discussions? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on 216? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 216.
Resolution appointing a member to the Anaronda County Ethics Commission.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Abstain.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention, Resolution 216 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 11115.
An ordinance concerning public works utilities allocation of water and wastewater capacity, charges, and fees for property subject to adequate public facilities and capital facility connection charges.
Mr. Marsick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick from the County Executive's Office. As we discussed at the work session and the last two council meetings, Bill 11115 is part of the county executive's initiative to make the cost of living and starting a business in Anaronda County more reasonable. This legislation reduces the connection fees to more reasonable levels and utilizes the fund balance to offset the initial cost. We've walked the council through this bill several times, but staff from Department of Public Works is here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marsick, I've discussed with several of my colleagues the concept of splitting this into residential versus non-residential, and I've been told by various people that that's not possible. And I understand that, but I wondered if you could, or perhaps the auditor or someone could explain on the record why it is that we need to treat the commercial and the residential side equally with regard to the connection charge. I can tell you what they told me, but I'd rather hear it from you guys.
I'll defer to Ms. Kenny.
Okay, yeah. I think it came from Office of Law, so that'd be great.
It may have been forwarded to you from, I did answer this question about a month or so back, for the record, Kelly County Senior Assistant County Attorney. If the council were to make the charges different for residential properties versus non-residential properties, I really think that it would open the county up to legal challenge because there's really no rational basis for the fees to be different for the two different types of properties because the costs to the county are the same for constructing the infrastructure and things like that. So there's really no rational basis to have the fee be different for either one because the cost of constructing capacity for an EDU is the same whether it's an EDU for residential or an EDU for non-residential construction.
Understood. And, I mean, we've talked about this before, and I think you guys have heard me say, I understand the need to want to incentivize commercial growth right now, but I don't quite feel that way about residential. But several constituents and others have approached me about my thoughts, and I just wanted to get that reasoning on the record as to why I'm not trying to split the bill up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grasso.
I'm gonna throw my little curveball in here. We're making a statement that is not, it doesn't cost the county anymore, okay? But the fact of the matter is, is there an impact fee or does there have to be adequate public facilities for putting up a commercial store as it would for residential? You know what I'm saying? And ultimately, what's happening is, Mr. Walker said last time, I said it was two people per household, and he asked somebody, and they said .78 kids per household. Ultimately, it's costing the county more money to allow residential housing than it is to allow commercial housing. My argument has always been and still will always be that I would rather put buildings, businesses up to create the jobs for the people that are already here than to bring more people to Anaronda County and not be able to give them jobs or work. And to me, I don't think we have a population problem. We've got an employment problem, and even though we are, I think, at 4% or 5%, whatever the number was, I would rather see businesses go here than we don't have to deal with. Or even the fact of the matter is, I wouldn't have a problem with 55 and older because they don't work onto our budget as far as the Board of Education. We keep increasing each year with our Board of Ed. Now, one of my colleagues over here says that's because that's maintenance of effort that keeps increasing. You know, there could be a thousand arguments here, but if we had an argument to say that it really does cost the county to build residential houses after the fact, you know, with education, wouldn't that be something to stand on in litigation? As compared to turning around and saying, well, we put a sub shop up, you know, we're a Two Guys or some type of commercial-type business. I mean, wouldn't everybody remember Two Guys? I'm dating, okay? I used to love Two Guys, don't you not?
I thought you were talking about Five Guys.
You wasn't even a thought in your father at that point with Two Guys was around.
If I might reject, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. What Ms. Kelly is describing is the cost to build the capacity is the same whether it's resident, water sewer capacity is the same whether it's for commercial development or residential development. Because it's all based on an EDU, 250 gallons of flow. That's the measure we use for assessing capital facility connection charges. So the total cost to, may be different, the cost to education, the cost to roads.
Shouldn't that be included in with it?
Well, that is, an impact fee. So, you know, the county has an array of different impact fees for the types of development that are being proposed and their own metric for how you compute the impact. And for water and sewer, it's gallonage. How many gallons of water are they going to use or dispose of? I think you're asking, you know, you've got maybe the wrong solution to the right question. You know, zoning is how you would fix what it is that you're describing. I think you're too far down the road trying to fix it with a fee change. If you really believe that the county's mix of residential and commercial development is out of order, then it should probably be...
Go towards more, go towards the commercial side.
You'd have to rezone it.
Okay.
And land use.
That might be an idea. All right, thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Any other discussion on 111, the administration? Open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Bill 11115? We do have one.
We do have one.
You have nothing to say. Thank you. Seeing no movement, the public hearing on this bill is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 11115.
An ordinance concerning public works utilities allocation of water and wastewater capacity charges and fees.
See, there are two amendments. Please read the amendment, title of Amendment Number Four.
This amendment provides a method for setting capital facility connection charges for the fiscal years 2021 and thereafter.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Thank you. So this is an amendment that comes a little bit from our discussion at the last meeting where we talked about the legislation before us sets the rate for, I believe, four years until 2019. But the model that has been put forth assumes that that policy will continue after that point. So this amendment would not require a 2.5% increase from then on, but it would give the administration the ability to set a rate that was 2.5% higher after 2019. So it doesn't change what the bill does from now until then at all. It just speaks to what happens after that.
Very good. Mr. Marsick.
We would firstly thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer, for sharing the amendments that you're offering tonight with us today.
I'm a pretty nice guy.
You are a nice guy. I think we would say that this amendment probably isn't necessary at this point. I think that, you know, as we discussed, I think that you're looking out in 2020 and starting to look at something that can be addressed at some point in the future. I think right now, we don't think this amendment is necessary in the sense of we're going to have the rate changes built into the current code over the next four years, and then we'd be willing to look at this in the near future to see what is the best path forward, but I would ask that the council would reject this amendment at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand, Mr. Marsick, that some of the administration's opposition is because they don't want to delay the bill anymore. You don't seem super opposed to this, so if I was to withdraw this amendment but consider it as future legislation to speak to what happens after July 1, 2020, is that something that you would be more favorable on?
I would be. I think it's, you know, we'd be very willing to work with you. I think, as we've said, that, you know, the county executive is committed to maintaining this, two times the debt service fund balance in this account, and we'd be more than willing to work with you to figure out what the best solution forward after that is.
All right. Well, I'll hold you to that, Mr. Marsick, and with my colleague's indulgence, who seconded it, I'll withdraw the motion.
Mr. Grasso?
I'll remove it.
Amendment Four has been withdrawn. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
This amendment adds a requirement that the county executive provide an annual report on the projected revenues and expenses on the sinking fund for payments on bonds for water and wastewater facilities, including any recommended changes for capital facility connection charges and environmental protection fees.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Mr. Trumpbauer?
Thank you. I really like this amendment, Mr. Chairman. This is essentially a reporting requirement. If we are going to be reducing the rate fairly drastically now and then raising it the subsequent years, I would like to go into that with more data and information so that we can be sure that the 2.5% is the right amount each year. By requiring this report 120 days before the end of the fiscal year, it will give the administration and ultimately the council, I think, the data necessary, excuse me, to, you know, to make that judgment, are we setting the fee at the right amount?
Mr. Marsick.
I think, again, my similar argument to the last one, I think that at this point, we would ask you to reject this amendment, but we'd be very willing to provide this data to you. I think the only concern, as we discussed as well, is the 120 days requirement that I think we can add this into our budget submission each year and going forward as far as it would be, obviously, a 60-day difference roughly, May 1, to put the data that's requested into the budget, or we can have a report filed to you at some point in the future if you want to codify that into a requirement, we'd be willing to work with you on that as well. But at this point, we would ask you to reject this amendment.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if I might.
You may.
All right, so similar to the last one, you don't want this as part of this bill, but you're going to work with me if I want to codify this in future legislation?
Yes.
All right. I'll hold you to that, and I will similarly make a motion to withdraw Amendment Five.
Mr. Pruski, withdraw your second. Amendment Five is now withdrawn. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 11115.
An ordinance concerning public works utilities allocation of water and wastewater capacity charges and fees.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
I'm gonna say it one more time, and final time. This bill doesn't make me warm and fuzzy inside by any means. Everybody knows how I feel about it. We need to go with commercial. I'll take Mr. Phipps's suggestion and maybe see if we can do something on the zoning issues. And with that, reluctantly, I'll say aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Bill 11115 as amended has passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can you please read the title of Bill 11215? I'm sorry, 118.
An ordinance concerning real property taxes historic preservation tax credit.
Mr. Trumpbauer, I believe this is your bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing further to add, just to tease your excitement a bit. I will have some amendments to offer at the appropriate time.
Very good. Mr. Marsick, anything to add to that?
Nothing. We continue to support this bill and will work on the amendments.
Very good. Any discussion by the council before we open up the public hearing? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on Bill 11815? Seeing no movement in the audience, public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment 11815.
An ordinance concerning real property taxes historic preservation tax credit.
Please read Amendment Number Three.
This amendment provides that repayment of tax credit will include allowable interest.
Is there a second?
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, is there a second? Second is, Mr. Trumpbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't intend to withdraw this one. It's like Trumpbauer Amendment Night. Anyway, you will probably recall at the last meeting, there was some testimony about clarifying what would happen with regard to the interest and everything. I worked collaboratively again, I believe, with the Controller and the administration to get this language, which I think everyone agrees on now. So despite our best efforts to get everything locked in the last meeting, this is a further clarifying amendment that I would urge your support for.
Mr. Marsick.
We support this amendment as well.
Anyone from the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Three.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Abstain.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention, Amendment Number Three has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
This amendment provides that upon repayment of the tax credit amount, the easement shall be released and provides for the manner of collection.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
So move. Mr. Trumpbauer?
Again, this is another clarification. Originally, we had, well, I had thought that the terms of the release of the easement were understood, but this is another clarifying bit of language that takes all the doubt of it. Again, I worked with the administration and Office of Law to put this together, and I think everybody's happy.
Very good.
As happy as you can be about historic tax preservation.
Mr. Marsick.
We're very happy with the amendment, and we would support this amendment.
Everybody's happy.
Any discussion with the council? Seeing none, please call the roll on this happy amendment.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Well done, Mr. Perutka. Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Four has passed.
Since this bill was amended, we'll hear it in two weeks for final vote. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number, Amendment 11915.
An ordinance concerning capital budget and programs, demo building code, health, amending scope and description of project.
Thank you. I believe this is the administration bill?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick, the County Executive's Office. Bill 11915, we had before you in the work session. This bill amends the scope and description of the demolition and health capital project. Inspection and Permits currently uses this fund to demolish structures that are unsafe and unpermitted, and they have not made required corrections or continue to violate the building code. We, with this bill, will create a funding source to abate zoning code violations similar to what they currently use for unsafe structures. This is the budget bill necessary to complement Bill 115 that the council passed at the last council session to clean up zoning violations in the county. Dan Kane is here from Inspection and Permits to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council, questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go into public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on 11915? Seeing no movement in the audience, public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read Bill 11915.
An ordinance concerning capital budget and program, demo building code, health, amending scope and description of project.
Any discussion? Please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Perutka?
If I might, just briefly, I voted against this bill.[1510.02]
This is, as Mr. Marzick pointed out, this is basically a complement bill that funds the work that was, that was in 11515. And so I intend to vote against this for the same reason that I voted against the bill itself. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill 11915 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 12015.
An ordinance concerning first amendment to lease of county-owned property in Annapolis, Maryland known and designated as Wiley H. Bates High School, Smithville Street and South Villa Avenue Debate School Limited Partnership.
Ms. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and County Executive's Office. Bill 12015, we discussed at the council work session as well. This allows the county to amend its lease with Bates School to allow for the construction of telecommunications equipment on the roof of the senior housing building. All the proceeds from Verizon, the Verizon agreement will go to the Boys and Girls Club to serve low-income and disadvantaged youth. We have Kathy Koch, Christine Romans, Jason Federman from Office of Law to answer questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Trumbauer?
I know what you guys are thinking. You're thinking, well, this is in Mr. Trumbauer's district. I wonder what he thinks about this. And I just wanted to say that I support this bill. It's been a long time coming, and thank you all for, for the years of work, I guess, you've, you've put in to make this happen. Sometimes things are a little more difficult than you think they should be, but anyway, this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Smith?
Are there any other similarly positioned facilities that could fall into the same situation? I mean, while Wiley H. Bates is under a specific agreement, and so we ought to modify that agreement, are there other facilities that might be in that same situation? That five years down the road, or two years down the road, some?
That could be leased out for this type of?
Yes.
Project?
Sure.
I'm sure there's county property. We could look into it, and I'm sure Ms. Romans knows off the top of her head, but...
I mean, it just seems like if it's, if it's an additional revenue source for that one piece of property, why not look at exploring it for other additional properties throughout the county?
Christine Romans, Acting Central Services Officer. Obviously, the Bates property is pretty unique in the way it's structured with the three different uses there. However, you're probably correct that there are community buildings, or buildings that are used by the community, or other buildings that maybe this could be an option for, so we can certainly take a look at reviewing properties to see if there's an option for antenna leases like this. As you probably know, the county does sign antenna leases or allow water towers to be used for antenna leases in a similar situation. Obviously, this is a little bit special because it benefits Boys and Girls Club.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Any other conversation? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on 12015? Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Mike Pittsburgh, 2230...
2230 Mulberry Hill Road in Mr. Perutka's district. I mean, hate to talk through the sale, but I'm President and CEO of Community Preservation and Development Corporation, which is the general partner on the Bates School Limited Partnership. We run the senior housing component piece of that. I'm also on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, and we've been working together. There is, part of this antenna will be on the roof of the residences, but we want all the revenue to go to the Boys and Girls Club. And we've also borne some not insignificant legal fees trying to get this pulled together, which we're really hoping that Verizon is going to reimburse us for, if they're here listening. But, but we definitely support this, have. We've been working, as Mr. Trumbauer noted, for quite a while to do this, and appreciate your support.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 12015.
An ordinance concerning first amendment to lease of county-owned property in Annapolis, Maryland.
Any conversation? Please call the roll.
No, we have an amendment.
Let's do the amendment first, then.
Amendment number one. This is a technical amendment to correctly identify the date of the original lease agreement.
Mr. Marzick?
This is just an amendment to switch 2015 to 2005 in the bill.
Technical amendment?
Correct.
Get a motion to adopt?
Second.
Sounds like I got my second there, too. Please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso? Oh, Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is passed.
Thank you. Being as that was a technical amendment, we can vote on the bill tonight, and we will. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 12015.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 12015 as amended is passed.
Thank you. The lone Eagle Scout up here on the county council has asked that we recognize the Boy Scout sitting in the back. We appreciate you guys coming out. You're working on a, on a merit badge? What troop?
1980.
1980?
Yeah.
And where are you guys from?
Odenton.
Odenton, what's the merit badge?
Assistantship and...
Awesome. Thanks for coming out tonight, guys.
Acknowledge last.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 12115.
An ordinance concerning second amendment to lease of county-owned property in Annapolis, Maryland known and designated as Wiley H. Bates High School, Smithville Street and South Villa Avenue to the Boys and Girls Club of Annapolis and Anarundale County.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office. Bill 120 was amending the lease with Bates. Bill 12115 allows the county to amend the lease with the Boys and Girls Club to allow for the construction of telecommunications equipment on the roof of the senior housing building. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on 12115?
Somebody signed up.
Somebody signed up. I'm guessing that's you, sir. Mr. Summers.
Peter Summers, I'm chairman of the board of Boys and Girls Club, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for considering this, for the 400-plus members of our clubs that occupy those buildings after school, and six clubs throughout your county. This is important. We're a 26-year-old organization, and we've never had a reoccurring multi-year revenue stream. In addition to that, you know we occupy a historic building, and we're responsible for the maintenance of that. So these funds will go a long way to doing that and allowing us to use funds that would otherwise be diverted to that purpose for our kids. So this is important for us, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Seeing no other movement to speak on this bill, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read Title 12115.
An ordinance concerning second amendment to lease of county-owned property.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Perutka?
May I just offer my thanks to everybody who worked hard to make this happen. I think this is a great use of time and a creative idea that, that will profit the parties involved, and I appreciate the work. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 12115 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read Title 12215.
An ordinance concerning special community benefit districts procedure for establishment.
Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and County Executive's Office. Bill 12215 allows for non-residential groups within the county to form a special community benefit district, as residential communities currently are permitted to do so. Our goal is to have this bill complement a bill that's actually across the street in the General Assembly, to provide a voluntary financing mechanism for infrastructure connections that are beyond the county's current capacity to construct. The state legislation will permit SCBDs to be used to finance water and sewer connections. This bill would allow for non-residential groups to form an SCBD within the county. Taken together, we're hoping that these bills will lessen the expansion of commercial properties onto septic systems as well. So John Hammond from Budget Office is here to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions from the council?
Ms. Chair?
Ms. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I know we're on a roll, so I don't want to belabor our good pace here, but just very briefly, I think, I think all of us understand how residential SCBD works with having to get enough people to sign the petition, or change the bylaws, or whatever. When we're talking about a non-residential entity, that would be like a business park or something like that. Is it a similar procedure where all of the owners of the land would need to sign off? And if so, if it's just one owner, but, but that owner has business tenants, is there a role for the tenants to sign off on it, or is it just one person that has to sign and say, I want to do this?
I'll defer to Ms. Blair on this because she is our expert on SCBD law, but I believe it's based on the property owners is how the law is set up.
It is. It would be a majority of the property owners would have to, it would be the same petition process that we use for residential properties.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have a, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Walker?
Along those same lines, I guess, I understand what, you know, the premise behind this bill is to improve the section of Route 3 in particular, but I guess the question is, do 100% need to sign on, or is it still 50? Because the, you know, in this case, one person or one entity owns a long strip of property, multiple properties. But what happens if there's a property in the center that decides, you know, out of 15 people, or, you know, there's 15 parcels, let's just say, as an example, and 12 of them are owned by one individual?
Yes, 12.
And they say, I got 12 votes, so the three people that are, you know, happen to be along this strip, don't have a choice, they're going to have to pay. Is that?
That's the way it works. And that's the way it works in the residential situation. If you own six parcels...
Right, but typically, in a residential situation, it's a homeowners association with people owning different properties. It's not typically one person that owns all the parcels. I mean, if you looked at the majority of SCBDs that are set up in the county, it's not, that's not the way they are established.
Right, but we, I mean, we do, probably do have situations where there's been more than one prop, the owners of more, people own more than one property within a district. May not be the example you just gave, but these, these entities will still be required to have a, an assoc, a corporation, civic or community association that administers the district. So they will have to come together or have membership in some entity that will then administer the district.
But what happens if they decide they don't want membership in that entity? Like, you know, again, this, this example, I understand what the purpose of the bill is, and I'm supportive of trying to improve, you know, the strip along Route 3, but the question is if you've got, you know, three businesses that decide they don't want to be a part of this, this nonprofit organization, how does that, they just stuck?
Well...
And who draws the boundaries? I guess, is the group that gets together just decide, we're going to draw the boundaries and...
Well, the boundaries have to be related to the benefit conferred...
Right.
...by the purposes of the district. That's the same as in a residential...
Sure.
...SCBD. And also, the same as in a residential SCBD, the, you only have to be eligible for membership in the association that's administering the district. There's no requirement that you actually be a member.
Be a member. You just have to be eligible.
You just have to be eligible for membership. There's also no requirement that it be free to be a member. We do have some homeowners associations or civic, community associations that do charge to be, for membership. So that does exist out there. And we have had situations where SCBDs, residential SCBDs have been formed, where it is a bare majority, and the minority gets into the district whether they want to be there or not.
Yeah, I get that. I guess with commercial, in this particular case, it just kind of brings them by.
Well, we have, the one that's approached us...
Right.
There's another one that's approached us, that's Cape St. Clair Business Owners Association, which is the shopping center in Cape St. Clair where Grouse is. That has 49 properties that are all individually owned, even though it kind of looks like it would all be under one ownership. So that's another situation where, and they already have an association that they all belong to that would be available.
And is the main intent, I guess I'm just trying to understand, so in this case, the main intent is to bring water and sewer down that strip of Route 3? Is that the purpose, Mr. Marzick, as I understand it?
That's the purpose of the one you're alluding to, along Route 3. And then there's also another one that Ms. Blair talked about, and I believe you'll hear from some of the folks from Cape St. Clair.
Why wouldn't we go through a water and sewer petition process, then? What's, how does this distinguish from a water and sewer petition process?
Well, this, yeah, this, this allows them to pay in a different way. What they foresee, my understanding is what, right, my understanding, what they foresee doing is going out and getting a loan, financing everything, including the connection fees, and then repaying the loan through the assessment. And the Cape St. Clair one, I think, is just water. And it flows, no pun intended, flows from a road project in the area that is also have, where water is going under the road, so.
So it's sort of like a special taxing district?
Yes, but they, we, the county would not, the county will not own this infrastructure, so it can't be the, that type of special taxing district, according to bond counsel.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Perutka?
So I'm a former community association president, and my understanding is when you do articles of corporation, when you form, that sets the boundaries. So I'm just wondering for this, you were making the analogy, or Mr. Walker was making the analogy, that if you had 15 properties and only 12 want, well, if the three didn't want to be a part of the boundaries, you can't just incorporate someone in that, in about, am I correct? I mean, am I missing something here?
Not necessarily in this situation, because what's going to happen is the water, let's say it's that situation where you have 10 properties on each side of Route 3 that are going to be, have water, serve sewer service or both. And so that's what the, the purpose is, to run the water and sewer service. All of those properties benefit from that water and sewer service. So therefore, when you are looking at the boundaries of the district, then you've, that's who's benefited by the district. It's the same thing in a community. You know, if, if they form a special community benefit district to pay for their, you know, improvements to their clubhouse, or their marina, or something like that, you can't form a separate corporation that then picks and chooses among the properties that want it versus the ones that don't want it. You really have to, because that whole community becomes benefited by the fixed-up pier or the clubhouse. So, so that's the way, the, the association has, anybody, anybody who's going to be benefited by this is going to be part of that association.
Yeah, I guess it just gets into the, how we look at a community association versus a, a business association.
Yeah.
And certainly, you can't add, say, you know, there were 1,000 homes in, in an area, and then another development, five are built, and they say, well, no, you're not a part of it. Well, if they weren't a part of the articles and corporation and the boundaries set first place, they wouldn't be there. So for the commercial one, I understand what you're saying about the benefit, but could there be a legal argument saying that, you know, I'm a property owner on this, I never agreed to be a part of the association, so why should I have to pay? That's what I'm saying from a legal challenge. I think that's what Mr. Walker is getting at, is about, you know, impinging, I certainly understand the benefit piece, but in terms of someone being forced to be a part of it, that...
Yeah, now, it certainly is a challenge in this situation. It's a challenge in the situation where you don't have a distinct community. Whenever we have one of these that comes to us, and they're not a distinct platted community, it's always difficult. I think the one that comes to my mind is the Little Magathie River Association, where you have the Little Magathie River, and you have properties on, waterfront properties on one side, waterfront properties on the other side. And they did form an association, and they defined their boundaries as everybody on the Little Magathie on one side, and everybody on the Little Magathie, and it was not a distinct community. And they were all, you know, they were all eligible for membership in that association, they were all petitioned, and they all voted for or against, and that district was ultimately formed. So that's a similar situation to what you're talking about with property owners along the road, or, and, and I understand Mr. Walker's point that here you're going to have a majority of those properties owned by one owner, and then everybody else kind of gets dragged along, so to speak, but that's...
And I don't want to make a assumption, maybe all 15 agree, and, and it works out.
Right.
I mean, there's no issue, but I, I'm trying to figure out, what's the mechanism to protect the one or two that maybe don't? That's all I'm just trying to...
Well, I think a, a big part of it as well is that the SCBD has to come before the council for approval as well.
That's true.
So, I mean, there's a, a big step there.
There's a mechanism there for us to, to hear from somebody.
We dealt with this earlier in the year with the, one of the, I can't think of the name of it now, but where there's the controversy on that, so.
Pines on the Severn.
Pines on the Severn.
But, but that, and that is the same situation in a community, where you can have 49% of the people that do not want it, and get pulled into it, and get an assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fink?
Ms. Summers?
Could I clarify? Ms. Blair, so we have special community benefit districts that require more than a majority, so it can be 50.1. We have special taxing districts that require 2/3 of the properties and 2/3 of the owners to approve.
Yes.
And those are for infrastructure as well. And then we also have tax increment districts. So you're saying for a special taxing district like Farmington or Dorchester, that the county owns that infrastructure?
I believe we do.
Okay, and Bill Hen says that the county has to own the infrastructure for a special taxing district.
When I asked him about the specific situation, that's what I was told.
Okay, but we don't have to own the infrastructure for a tax increment district?
That I don't know. I can check with him.
We don't own the Maryland Live Casino Hotel infrastructure, so I just want to make sure that there are really three types of districts that you all are presented with, and the special taxing districts that Mr. Walker referred to require 2/3 majority, so...
I'll, could you, I'll double-check with him.
Thank you.
And get back to everybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Brooke.
Was there any, may I ask, was there any thought with respect to this commercial SBCD idea of making it a supermajority to avoid, rather, to make it similar to what the auditor was just talking about with respect to the taxing district, that it would be 2/3 or...
Yeah, sure, sure. Erosion control districts require 75%. That was an issue that has been discussed at various times. I'm not sure if legislation was ever brought forward, but I know that at various times, both through the council and the administration, various administrations, there's been discussions about making it more than 50%. It's even in the residential situation. That's, that's totally county law. It's not dictated by anybody else, any state law or anything like that.
So, I'm sorry, so was, was there, in the drafting of this legislation for commercial, in the case of commercial, was there thought of making it more a supermajority or just...
Not in this, no. I'm talking in the past.
If I, let me, let me, let me make sure I understand. If the seven of us were, if the seven councilmen here were all property owners, and four of us decided that we wanted to do this, the other three, the other sub shop owners or whatever they are down on that end would just be stuck with it? That's right?
Yes. And that's the way it is.
And their only way out of it would be for them to come to the council, to come to the council when it was being formed and ask us not to agree to form it.
Exactly. Because once it's formed, you also need a majority to dissolve it, so.
Well, again, again, I'm, I'm curious as to why, it would worry me, I think, and this has already been expressed here, but it would worry me that it could be formed against the will of peoples, of people who own property, of obvious stakeholders, and that's what we're dealing with. That's what's before us.
And that's the way all of our SCBDs, the residential ones, have also been formed under the same structure.
Sure, but there's great, greater potential, as Mr. Walker, I think, has pointed out, there's a greater potential in this situation that one or two property owners would have their way with respect to the formation.
It's possible. I mean, we've had districts that have formed with as few as nine properties in residential situations, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Marzick, along that stretch of Route 3, do you know how many parcels there are that'll be impacted, and then how many of those are owned by RBBS?
I don't know off the top of my head.
How about in the other situation you mentioned? The Cape St. Clair, I believe you said?
Forty-nine.
There are 49 properties.
And do you know what percentage of those are supportive of having...
I think they all are.
I think many.
Everybody?
100%.
100%. There you have it.
Any other conversation? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. We do have two people that have signed up to speak on this bill. Mr. Ladd and Mr. Breeden. And if there's anyone else wishing to speak on 122-15, we do have some additional seats up here. Mr. Ladd, we'll start with you.
Good afternoon. Dick Ladd, 1537 Shipsey Road. I'm here to support this bill, particularly for Cape St. Clair. It is for the Lower Broadneck Peninsula, the backbone of our communities down there. It does not have running water. It is the key to keeping that place viable, and I think that there are a lot of other places in the county that are going to have similar problems as we move forward. There are, Volkan can correct me if I don't say it right, but there is concern that if they ever lose any of their wells, we would not be permitted to replace them. If, in some cases, we're going to start having to take, places like that off septic, and we have the authority to demand that they come off septic and go on sewer. We automatically have them in the position of, they are in the position of having to say, "We are going to ask to do it, organize to do it, and they must do it to stay it in business. That's why this is important." And this enables them, once they make that decision, to approach the issue of how you finance it. In many cases, these organizations get to the point where if they had to pay the bill within a year or two, it would be equivalent to forcing the shutdown. They just don't have sufficient margins. So that's why it's important to open this particular mechanism to helping them handle the financing of this thing. The other thing that I think is important is, as I mentioned, septic. In the Broadneck Peninsula between two rivers, there are a lot of homeowners' associations, residents, one of which I live in, that are all on septic. And there is going to come a time in your all's tenure here where we're going to start saying, "We've got to take 20%, I mean, 50% of the 40-some-on-thousand septic systems offline, and we want to put them on sewer." This does provide, I think, some assistance in homeowners' associations to help them finance the construction that goes on it. And the difference is, if you have, like I do, live on a community that owns the street[1560.80]